Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council. We'll begin with prayer and pledge. Please join with me. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to be here and to serve the city and the citizens of this community. Be with us as we deliberate. Be with all our city employees and all our citizens. Keep them safe during this special time coming up, especially this special holiday of Thanksgiving. In your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is founded, one nation under God, in the middle of liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilwoman Bench, Mayor Protem O'Neal is absent. Councilman Chlorus, Councilwoman Moore, Councilman Balls, Councilman Clark, and Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have seven members present and two absent.
Before we begin, I'd like to remind the audience to remain quiet and refrain from speaking. That would include cheering, booing, or other rude or obnoxious behaviors. At this time, I'd like to remind the people in the audience and council and staff to turn their cell phones down so it does not interfere with our meeting. And Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor.
Are there any announcements?
That takes us to announcements, and I do have a few this evening. City Hall will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday Thursday and Friday, November 27th and 28th. The Waste Collection Convenience Station will be open Saturday, December 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for city residents. And this is the last week that yard waste collection can be picked up with your regular trash collection day. However, due to the Thanksgiving holiday, those with Thursday and Friday service will experience a delayed pickup by one day. Yard waste collection service will resume in April. And the Neighborhood Association Action Group meeting has been rescheduled to tomorrow, Tuesday, November 25th at noon in the council chambers. And Mayor, that takes us to personal appearances.
And before we begin the personal appearances, let me remind the speakers, our limited to three minutes. The purpose of a personal appearance is to direct city, to address council. Speakers shall address their remarks to the council as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual council members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general questions about the topic of their presentation. All questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-ups. Speakers shall not ask questions of specific council members. And Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our first personal appearance is Michael Valmer. Our next on our list is Joe LaPrena.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Joe LaPrena. I reside on 1118 Cass Street in the city of Saginaw, which I just moved back to the city in June. The reason I've come to the city council is because this is my first time approaching the city council like this. I am concerned about the bridges of Saginaw. On November 19th, I was on my way to the city of Saginaw Board Education Meeting on East Genesee Bridge, and I had slipped and fell. The bridge was really salty. It was not clean. The one thing I'm concerned is how can a resident get involved to help the city of Saginaw or serve on a committee to actually care about the other residents that actually walk? I personally don't have a car to drive. I see a lot of people, a lot of homeless people walk, and I don't know if you guys can get out and chance to walk the bridges? It's not right for this city to struggle and not care about the bridges. The bridges sidewalks are horrible during the wintertime. And I went to the hospital, and nothing was broken because I was at the Pride Christmas Parade on the 22nd handing out the ribbons, which, you know, two of the council members were here, that were here tonight, were in that parade. And it should be nice to see the city of Saginaw do something about these bridges. You're talking about fixing these bridges, fixing these roads. Won't you fix the sidewalks on the bridges? Salt them. If you need help, you have my number, call me. I'll be personally glad to get out of my house, go to every bridge, and shovel it, and buy the bag of salt out of personally in my own pocket and salt the bridges because I care about the city of Saginaw. That's the reason why I left Carrollton Township as a trustee to move back into the city to care about it. And I hope you guys can solve this problem because I don't want to see another person fall on these bridges. These bridges are horrible. They're breaking apart. Something needs to be done. A committee or forum or something needs to be formed and take care of these bridges. Plus, I would like to thank Mayor Browning because you made me the person who I am today when you were my dare officer back at Salinem Elementary, and I want to say thank you for making me the person who I am today. Thank you.
We have Debbie Malconian.
I'm here this evening to ask a few questions. I realize next week, the interviews will begin for Chief of Police, and I realize that the panels have been selected. The second panel is made up of local community. I feel the members of this group are important in the process and bring a valid perspective to the table. My concern that I have is that past few years, several neighborhood associations have grown. We represent 80 percent of the residents. We have a strong voice, which is being heard and listened to by city council and local government. More citizens are attending NAG meetings, citywide meetings, quadrant system meetings, and the rest. We've taken an active role in arson watch, light up the city, one week, one street, coffee with a cop, Citizens Advisory Committee, and a variety of other programs. We worked side by side with the former chief of police, and we gained his trust and support, which are vital merits of the new chief of police. We endorsed and worked on millages, which all have been sponsored by local government, public safety, police and fire department, and we stepped up to the plate and volunteered because all of us are committed to this city. Again, my question is, why haven't any of the neighborhood association presidents or people involved in neighborhood associations been asked to be part of the members of local community? I realize it's late at this time, but, and I'm not saying myself, but we are very competent people who are the leaders of all of the neighborhood associations as well as the residents within these associations. And I just feel that it should have been considered that one, I'm sorry, a representative from a neighborhood association be asked to have been on one of these panels. Thank you.
Remarks of council.
And remind council members that we have a five-minute time limit ourselves, and tonight we'll begin with Councilman Balls.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, citizens. I would like to thank everybody who've come to the council meeting today, and especially the ones who come in to voice their concerns about the city of Saginaw and what we're doing or can do to make this a better place for all of us. The gentleman commented about the bridges and stuff like that. I'm sure that they're going to get back with you and let you know what could be done or try to improve that situation if possible. Ms. Malconian, I appreciate all that you do for the neighborhood associations. You know, I wish that anybody that wanted to be on that citizens advisory council should have came forward maybe a little sooner and let the city manager know, you know. But we do appreciate what you guys do in the city. You guys do a lot of work. You do, I don't want to say you do police work, but you guys do a lot of watching, which is a good thing for the city of Saginaw. And all the neighborhood associations do a great job. I think that's one reason why the city is coming to a new rebirth because of all the neighborhood associations that we have that really care about our city of Saginaw, and we appreciate what you're doing. You know, I was thinking earlier about, you know, what can we do in the city to make this a better place? And we need to have people to come forward like yourselves and like this gentleman here to volunteer to help Saginaw to be a better place. We do have some issues here in the city of Saginaw with crime. I think a lot of that could be taken care of if we had more jobs. So I would explore anybody that's hearing my voice today. If you can make a job or find out any ways to make some employment for the city, for the citizens of Saginaw, please get involved in any organization that you know that can do that because we really need some work here. The other day, I got a phone call from Chrysler Corporation, well, from people that work for Chrysler, and they said they're looking for skilled tradesmen. And I've been saying this and bringing this up time and time again, that we need to do something to try to make our citizens skilled trades people. I work for NextEer Corporation, and we've got people that drive 40, 50, even 60, 70 hours, six miles, to get to work every day to come here to work in NextEer. These can be some good jobs that people of the city of Saginaw can do, you know, where they're going to have to drive so far. But there is a big void in the skilled trades arena, and we need to try to find some ways to make that happen. I know Amos O'Neal used to work with those, something like that, in the city of Detroit, and maybe he would partner with someone to help make that happen, and maybe we can get it in our school system or something like that. So I think there's some things we can do. We just got to start thinking outside the box a little bit more to find out how we can get our citizens to come to do that type of work. I've been doing it for 30-something years, and it's rewarding to be a pipe fitter. I have a son that's a pipe fitter, and it's a rewarding job. I mean, we make good money, good wages, and they need more. So even the governor has said that it's going to be as short as the skilled trade workers about two months ago. He said there's a lot of things we need to start doing in the city of Saginaw. Maybe the city manager can get with some of the school people, and maybe we can partner and try to see what we can do to make this happen in the city of Saginaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moore?
Good evening, citizens of Saginaw. I'd like to piggyback off of Mr. Councilman Balls. I thank all of the presenters for speaking. I don't have a lot to say. This has been a busy weekend, I know for the city. I accidentally cut my hand up, so I couldn't participate like I wanted to in the festivity, but I've got great reports from a lot of people saying that Friday night was excellent, cold and all. Saturday, they said, even in the rain. My granddaughter said, I still have fur, even in the rain. So we are looking up in Saginaw. I went to a couple events this weekend. One was the Youth Initiative that was at Mount Olive Church for our young people. It's a group that the black elected officials started, and basically, it is designed to educate our young people on what to do or what not to do when they're approached by our police officers. We don't want anything to happen to anybody, so we're trying to educate as best we can now. There's going to be a lot of other things getting ready to start up in Saginaw because it's time. It's time for a change. And so instead of us talking about it, we're not going to talk about it anymore. We're going to do what we need to do to make our city a better place. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Chlorus?
I have no comments this evening.
Mayor Protem O'Neal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to everyone. Windy night in Saginaw. I'm sure Works Department and all those departments are going to be pretty busy tomorrow if it's not already. But I'd just like to make reference, Mr. Mayor had an opportunity to represent the city of Saginaw at TruVine 70th Avenue. We were able to provide a proclamation for that ministry, 70 years, and it was great to be there for the city. Also, just hearing Councilman Balls make comments about some of the needs relative to employment. And, you know, when you look around and you listen, and you're in various places, like I am, in terms of Michigan Municipal League, National League of Cities, and you hear all of the activity that's going on across the country, I mean, I was like, my goodness, you know, and there's so much that could be done, but it's going to take the initiative of individuals, us, you know, working collaboratively to address these issues. And Councilman Balls, you're absolutely right, and we can do those kind of things. And I think that's what we have to really embrace and get some collaborative partners to work with us and start it. That's what we have to do. And we do have a great foundation in the city of Saginaw. There's been a lot of activities that have been established, sort of a resurgence or reemergence of Saginaw, if you will. And so I think it's up to us in terms of what can we do to create new opportunities for young people. As Councilman Moore mentioned, one event that just started this past Saturday relative to information and education to young people as it relates to how to respond, how to conduct yourself when you are in the environment of law enforcement, all for the purposes of changing the culture in terms of the perception, both youth and law enforcement. I think as we move forward with this program and have continual sessions, there'll be a lot of other offerings brought to the table in terms of exposure to the public. But again, it's about partnership, you know? You have to really look at both sides, you know, and say, you know, as individuals, young people, adults, we do have rights. There are certain things you can and do as a citizen if you're stopped by the police, and there are certain things you shouldn't do as a citizen when you're stopped by the police. So we want to make sure we educate the public, okay? We want to be proactive, you know, in our efforts to let the public know, as well as law enforcement know, that we're working with the general public to inform them of their rights, you know? So eventually, we will invite a lot of the leaders in the law enforcement community to kind of expound on some of the things we've been talking about to the public and just ask for their support to be more sensitive in terms of when they're stopping individuals and why they're stopping individuals, all in hopes of not just having a situation just, you know, I'm driving down Genesee, and just because you see me, you know, in a certain kind of vehicle, you know, you just stop me, you know, because I'm in that vehicle, or I'm a black man, or I'm Hispanic, or I'm a lady, you know? Could be any of those things. So I think having them be aware that we are working on this and we're educating the public, I think that will eventually reduce the frequency of those kind of stops that are, I mean, they're not warranted. I want to say not warranted because as a law enforcement officer, you know, there are certain things that they see and know that as public we don't know. They may have a description of a vehicle or individual that say, oh, that's what we look for, we've got to stop them. Not saying that. I'm speaking in terms of some of the things we've been seeing nationally, some of the things we've have as council in the city have experienced locally, and things that have gone on across the state. So again, being proactive, you know, doing something about it, not just sitting here and complaining and throwing rocks at the glass house, but being a part of the solution, not part of the problem. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Councilwoman O'Neal?
I have no comment this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank our speakers today, and thank you, Ms. Malconian, for your work as being a voice for the neighborhood association, and Mr. LaPrena. I hope I pronounced your name correctly. I'm sure the Works Department is going to get back to you on your issue. I, too, attended that event over the weekend, the Youth Summit hosted by the GLBEO. It was attended by several council members, a former mayor, there are several police officers, retired as well as current. There was a judge, a prosecutor, as well as a defense attorney, and they was there to educate our youth and somewhat build a bridge between our youth and police. You know, you can't ignore it. I mean, there is somewhat of a gap there, and events like this help bridge that gap, and hopefully it continues. It was well attended by several or many young people, and they appeared to get out of it. I'd also like to comment on what Mr. Balls said. It's important that we get our youth working. And I'm not saying this to put myself on a pedestal, but, you know, I guess more to give some attention to the Saginaw Intermediate School District. They have a career lakes program. It's an after-school program that meets maybe once or twice during a week, four an hour or two. They had several juniors, seniors there who came to the prosecutor's office. We did a tour of the prosecutor's office. We also sat in a few court proceedings, and the purpose is to, you know, start a career path for desired career choices. And it was a good contact with our youth, and let them know that we're not here, especially prosecutors, and the criminal justice system is not there to put our youth in prison, but, you know, to give some sense of justice, and that was another avenue to somewhat build that bridge. Just Mr. LaPrena mentioned about the issue with our roads. This is a good time for our citizens to get involved at a state level. There is a bill currently that just went from the state senate and is going into the House. It's going to attempt to raise quite a bit of money to address and repair our roads. It's a good time to get on the horn with your state senate, your state representative, call your relatives as well as in Michigan, let them know to call their state senate and state representative, and educate yourself on that bill and see if that's something you can support. But it's definitely attempting to address an issue that we've been looking at for several years now. I would like to recognize that the CK Eddie Home was purchased. It's one of our historic sites, and anytime we can preserve our history, that's a good thing for Saginaw, rather than letting someone else determine, define who Saginaw is. But when you're able to refurbish a property like this, that helps build our culture, help define who we are, and that's great. I'd like to congratulate Hosbeck Pickle Company. They received an award for outstanding corporate citizenship from the Mid-Michigan Chapter Association of Fundraising Professionals. Always doing a good job for our city. I guess my last thing I want to touch on, I think I spoke to several council members individually, but this diversity issue and some of the issues that were raised during the millage, you know, I think that's something that still remains open. I think we need to somehow address it. I think a good way to address this is probably start a, just a temporary committee, and hopefully pick up where the committee left off. And it doesn't even have to last a very long time. I'd just say maybe a year or so, and just attempt to pick up where that committee left off, possibly do some findings, make it public, make it open to our residents, and possibly at the end of one year, make some recommendations to the city. But it's just something that's out there that's going to always needle the city, needle the leadership here until we address it somehow. And as again, I just think it's open, and that's something we need to address, and hopefully, we can vote on something like that development committee in the next couple of meetings. But it's just something I was thinking about and something I think we should address. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Very much. Good evening, everybody. Yes, indeed, a windy, very windy night. That was the reason for my being a little tardy, so I ask for your excuse for me coming in a little late. I didn't get a chance to hear the public comments, but it sounds like they were addressed here by my fellow councilmen. First of all, Friday night, the holidays lighting ceremony, I was there. I'm not sure who else was there, but a lot of folks from the area, thousands, and even though it was very cold, a lot of kids there, and Barb Sheltra and her crew did a great job of welcoming Santa Claus and getting the lights lit. And then, just amazing to me, the number of volunteers and folks who come, they bring the big draft horses with the wagons, and the kids love that, and the adults do, too. You know, they take you around the big loop there on Ezra Russ, and I don't know, I counted at least six different wagons, maybe? I don't know if there was that many, but it seemed like it, which is a lot of horsepower, you know, pulling those, those big draft horses that they bring in. Very interesting. It's a real throwback to days gone by. So I want to thank all the folks, the Pride people, and all the different volunteers. You know, the other thing, we have the Anderson Enrichment Center, they have gingerbread candy house contests there every year, and this year was, they had a number of professional entries. It was incredible, really great stuff, and they were open for a couple of days to show that off. I would hope the folks took advantage of that. The week before that, if I got my dates right, was our Veterans Day event over at the Veterans Plaza, White Park. I know a number of us were there. Councilman Damon Tibbs and Councilwoman Annie Bench was there, and I saw Mayor Protem O'Neal was right there, too, and then, of course, our mayor. If anybody else was there and I didn't say it, I apologize, but I just want to say, Mayor, that was a great, inspired speech that you gave. It was very emotional, you could tell for you, which is the way it should be, which is the way it should be. And I was proud. I was proud of the way you delivered that. That was excellent. I want to thanks, too, to the manager's staff for doing all the little things. I mean, I mentioned one time recently, I think last meeting, about we need to find out who the oldest vet, living vet is, veteran for the city of Saginaw, and their staff, Vicki, responded and said that she looked up some facts about an MLive story, and I wish I had it with me, I don't, but it was really cool. It was a neat thing. Just want to thank her for that. And finally, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody out there and to you and your families. And I actually want to say a special God bless to all those generous souls who take time away from their family to feed the hungry and to put on special Thanksgiving dinners for the homeless. That's an incredible altruistic thing that you do, and I appreciate that. So many people appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ball, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Actually, good evening, everyone, as well. I wanted to say that the thoughts and comments of the fellow council members ahead of me were very well spoken, and I think they were tremendous, so I won't repeat those. I do want to say, with regard to being windy, Councilman Fitzpatrick is right, there was a line down on State Street near Bay Road that blocked the road. There was one at Grashit and Wheeler, all in the last hour or so, and there probably are several others. So if you're out driving tonight, be careful, be cautious, give yourself extra time. It's a pretty, they can be very dangerous and deadly. Mr. LaPrena? I hope that's correct. I want to thank you for your willingness to volunteer to follow up on that. I recommend you check with the city clerk's office, who will be able to give you a list of volunteer opportunities with the city's various commissions. able to give you a list of volunteer opportunities with the city's various commissions and boards. And hopefully that would be something that you would find of interest and maybe be able to make a significant contribution. Ms. McConian, as well, I want to thank you for your work, leadership and dedication. I have to leave it to the city manager to address your concern about someone on behalf of the neighborhood associations representing associations. I certainly think it'd be a great idea, but I don't know as, where that could possibly go from here, but if it's possible, I think it'd be a good idea. I want to also second Councilman Tibbs' comments about contacting your state representatives. Mr., again, Mr. La Perena, with regard to the issue of the roads. One of the biggest problems the city has, as we've told our citizens for years now, is the lack of funds. There was a study done by our Public Works Administrator recently that showed it costs through, well over $300 and some million dollars to fix all the roads in the city. We don't have those kind of funds, nor I'm sure do any of the communities in Michigan. So if there ever was a time to contact your state representatives about doing something, getting rid of the partisanship, settling on something that will help all the communities, this is the time. So not only to you, but to all our citizens out there. If you want to see the roads get better, you take it on yourself to speak with your representative. Telling us about the problem is important, but we don't want, we don't control the Purstings and Lansing. We need the funds to help us do the job that you want us to do. So hopefully our citizens will take that to heart and contact the representatives. Lastly, if there's anyone listening who has not been downtown in recent months, you're really missing something. You really are. What you're missing is the start of a downtown revitalization that's really gaining steam. I've run into a number of people, acquaintances downtown in the last several weeks, all of whom are saying, boys, this is the first time I've been down here in months, if not years, several years. And they are absolutely astounded at what is happening. And it's really impressive to see those people recognize the changes that are happening. Is it finished? Of course not. Is it gone as far as it can? Absolutely not. But it's one heck of a good start. If you haven't been down there, go down, take advantage of the opportunities that are there and the venues, the businesses that are there. I'm pretty sure you'll be pretty proud of what you see happening. So I would encourage anyone and everyone to take advantage of that opportunity. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Not too many comments tonight from the center of the table here, but a couple of things I do want to remark on. Joe, thank you very much for your comments earlier. Today I had the opportunity on Ask the Mayor segment on TV5 to talk about the winter coming up, the streets, the bridges, et cetera, to let people know that there is a priority that we set as a city, but more importantly, our streets department. And one of those highest priorities is the bridges that we have. Unfortunately, one of the hardest ones to do is the bridges that we have because you can no longer get done plowing all your bridges and you're going to have to go back and start over at the other end and start over. So it's a continual, it's a continual battle with, especially with the bridges, because you could shovel the sidewalk on the bridge and an hour later, we have an excess of snow, the plows are going to come through and they're going to fill it up right again. So it's a constant work that I think our crews do an excellent job with the amount of people that we have to do. Our main streets are the ones that we start doing first, followed by our hospital routes and then on down. And some of yous know, sitting at this table, that some of our neighborhoods are last to be done, but that's okay because that's the priority that we have to have. So we'll continually publish that and get that out. And if there's any way that we can find that you might be able to assist, we would certainly like that opportunity. So we'll take a look at that and see what I can come up with for that there. A couple of things, boy, aren't we lucky being in a city called the City of Trees until the wind blows? And then our biggest hazard is that we're a city of trees and all the lines and poles and everything that associates with. So be patient and be very careful out there, especially on evenings like this that is happening with us there. So congratulations to all the people that made Holiday in the city a great success. It's amazing. And I had the opportunity to, even though I could not make it, I had an opportunity to invite two families to please attend that. And during that event, they both texted me and said, what an outstanding. They just, they had no clue that that was even going on in the City of Saginaw, the festivities that we had there. And they said they will not miss it in the future. So something for all ages and just throughout the whole city. It's just not one central area. I mean, it's throughout the whole city. So we're really, really excited about that. And the parade was a great success again. And thank you for all the volunteers and Pride and everyone that puts that on for us. Councilman Tibbs, you're absolutely right, and we have not put that on the back burner. That is still right up front. I talked with the manager today about our next steps in meeting with the people that are concerned with us, who are also very concerned about the diversity in our workforce. And we certainly are going to keep that right on top and should come up with something with the next, probably first of the year, that we can be able to have something of substance that this council might be able to take a look at and make a commitment to that. So we certainly want that going on. And Councilman Balls, you bring up an excellent point there about the jobs and the apprenticeships. And I learned today that that's already happening, but I wasn't aware of it. And I wasn't aware of it simply because I guess, I just, I'm just not in that part of that business community that makes that happen. So I think in the near future, I'd like to have our manager and even maybe somebody else from either the schools or the community that might be able to maybe bring us a little more information, or if you have some to share, Mr. Manager, I certainly would appreciate that. I did have that opportunity to speak with our veterans and I'll tell you that it was a very emotional time for me, but not as, not as much as some of those veterans were there. I had a real tall, nice black man that he started walking up there and he had trouble walking up there. He just, it just emotionally, his fellow comrades that he lost and so forth, and you could just see that he was struggling. He wanted to be there, but he was just struggling so much. And so many of the other people there, too. So we just can't thank enough our veterans and those that do serve all time in our community. And so special, special thanks to them. Happy Thanksgiving and Mrs. or Madam Clerk, we are now at...
Mayor, you are now at Reports from Manager.
Mr. Manager, if you have anything for us tonight, I see such a light agenda.
Well, I have a few items here. The first one that I would address is, it came up during the personal appearances. The Police Chief interview panel that I have assembled is not something that the city manager has to do. It's new and I don't believe that we've ever had one do it before. And I talked about it here at council for the first time. And if I had put every individual who expressed interest of being on that panel, we would have, we'd have to rent the Dow probably to be able to include everybody. So it's not the point of leaving anybody out. I feel that what I have put together has a pretty broad scope of representatives that you can be a part of many groups. I have our largest employer represented, the business community through the Chamber, the NAACP, the Mexican-American Council, and clergy as well as law enforcement, who's a community member. So I tried to pick as broad of a, as broad of a group as I could. And I think the neighborhood associations know that how much the city appreciates the work that they do. The input that I receive from them, I see them typically minimum of two times a month at meetings. So I do get a lot of input from the neighborhood associations that I can bring to the interview process. City manager makes a selection of who the police chief is. So if your neighborhood groups communicate with me and what concerns they have, that will be brought into the process as well. I believe that, I believe that we'll have that covered. So, you know, this is the first time we're doing this. If we have to do it again, we'll have more experience putting the group together and maybe we can do it differently. So those interviews, I wasn't going to really do an update on it, but those interviews are scheduled for next week, starting Thursday and Friday. So they'll be over two days. And I expect that process to proceed through the month of, through the month of December. Hopefully we'll have everything concluded by the end of the month. Again, I would, I would thank the Pride Group, too, as well, for all the work that they do to put together the holidays in the heart of the city, as well as all the other events that they host and fundraise for throughout the year. So their work's appreciated as well. Skilled trades that Councilman Balls mentioned is, I think there are more opportunities than a lot of people know. It's just getting the word out there and getting young people in the schools interested in that type of education. The Saginaw Career Complex does have courses on that, and I think it would be a good idea if we have them come to council at some point to talk about that. I was in a meeting with Delta College and it's amazing the amount of work that they do in this area as well. They do training for Dow, they do training for a lot of businesses in the area that involve skilled trades as well as STEM. I do meet with Dow quite a bit, too. And even pipe fitters at Dow are, they're in dire need of that. And there are skilled tradespeople that do, as Councilman Balls mentioned, travel from Saginaw to Detroit to work. But there is a need here already that if we can get our young people in the schools more interested in that type of a job, they can work in the area, whether it's in Saginaw or in Midland or wherever it happens to be, there are jobs available. And Councilman Balls may know, he mentioned the governor stated the need for people to work in there, but I think there's a pretty telling statistic nationwide on the number of technology or skilled trade jobs that go unfilled annually. It's pretty astounding. So I think, I think we could get an update on that at some point in the next few months. Councilman Fitzpatrick mentioned the work that Vicki did. She actually found the information and talked to the veteran and invited him to meet with me if he feels like he'd like to do that. He's up in age pretty far and he said if he feels like coming in one day, he'll be willing to come in and meet me and the mayor at some point if he's, if he's up to it. So I thought that was really great and I'd take, to thank all the department heads and the staff in the manager's office. The clerk keeps track of everything, that, all the comments that you make and requests you make, and we try to get all the information back to you, at least by the next council meeting if we can. So it is a lot of work for all of our staff and department heads, so I think they all do a great job of getting the information back. And even as we talk, I did get a message across here about snow plowing. Mr. Carwatt and his staff are working on snow removal policy and he's going to be bringing that to me within the next few weeks and we could provide that update to council as The Water Supply Corporation, we talked about last week, and a big project that they had with Bay County and Bay City. And we confirmed that Mike Quinnelf, who is the director of the Saginaw Midland Water Supply Corporation, will be able to give us a presentation in December. I talked to him at our board meeting last week and he's going to kind of give a historical information about why we formed the Supply Corporation and what our water was like before that and distribution and what we have now, and then a brief update on where the Bay Project is. It is 2015 when that would come online. So Mike will be here, I believe it's the first meeting in December, December 8th. So that will be interesting. You have in front of you a packet that staff put together about the Community Development Block Grant Program. It's the green page. And they did something a little different because we had a lot of interest in this last year. So there is a memo put together and each group that is coming to interview has been assigned an interview time. They've had it well in advance, so I don't believe they'll be doing any reschedules. So it's all listed here, the date and the time for each interview. So if you are interested in seeing these presentations, they start next Tuesday, December 2nd, and they go through Thursday, the 11th. And they're all here in council chambers, starting at 5:00. The packet also includes the applications that were submitted, as well as the by date of the interview. So if you take that home and take a look at it, if you have any questions, you can get them back to my office. Ms. Jones and Ms. Trevino work on this and we'll get any questions you have answered if you forward them to me. And finally, we have a few of our neighborhood representatives here tonight who, they work with John Stemple and the rest of our staff on Arson Watch every year. So I think it's important, John had talked to me about the work that they did and they changed the way they do it a little bit this year. So I wanted to have them come up and give you a summary of some of the activities they did and just the spirit of cooperation that they had in doing it this year. I think, and they don't have to give a speech or anything, but I want them to just give a brief update and recognize them because they do a lot of work on that project and year-round, but this is one of the biggest projects they do. So I wanted, I wanted you all to hear from them, so.
Hi, I'm Jan Cook and I was the chairman of the Arson Watch Committee.
And I'm Debbie McConian and I was part of Jan's committee, along with other representatives from neighborhood associations. And Kathy Wagner was also instrumental in this committee. As you know, Arson Watch began in 2007 and we've made many, many changes and have to what it is today, I should say. This year especially, we were fortunate to have the Saginaw Community Foundation be our fiduciary and take care of all the monies that were donated to Arson Watch. Renee Johnson and her staff did a fabulous job setting up all the accounts, making donations go directly to Community Foundation, monitoring all the funds, you know, who donated, addresses, things like that. Whenever we called to see what's our balance, how much can we spend, things like that, her staff was right on it. We did have expenses and we're happy to say that we are banking $600-plus towards next year, which Community Foundation will maintain that account for us and I would say for the future of Arson Watch. That was their donation to Arson Watch and I believe the cost is about $500 if an individual were to contact the Community Foundation. So we were very, very pleased with that generous donation by Community Foundation. Jan, say anything.
I just wanted to thank all of the groups. There were representatives out there from, we met at the FOP Hall... There were representatives out there from, we met at the FOP Hall on Niagara and started it off with the press, and all of the police were there in the fire. And we thank them for their help, too, because we couldn't do it alone. They were there, and then we took off. We had a meeting place for food, we had three places for food, was the FOP Hall, and then the Houghton-Jones Resource Center. And we also, the Saginaw Boxing Club this year for the first time. They are part of Zion Lutheran Church there on Hancock and Mason. And they opened their doors and had food and drink and everything for any of the volunteers that wanted to stop. So it means a lot because they get to just get off the road for a bit and then go back out. We did have to purchase some shirts this year, and we had other expenses that we needed to do. But everybody was of very big help doing it. The Workwear Store, where I understand they get a lot of the uniforms from the city. They worked very, very well with us on helping with our, we kind of had a little design, and they took that and made beautiful shirts. I mean, they were really nice.
And we did have two other bits, too.
Yeah.
And they came in as the lowest, so we did go with them. Volunteers were numerous. They were out both nights. They did check back for coffee, for refreshments, things like that. Goom Restoration, as well as Hammond Restoration, were major sponsors in terms of work side-by-side with us throughout all the planning meetings that we had. Let's see. I mean, we could read all the names, but that would take a tremendous amount of time. We did check into the cost of being able to take an ad out in the Saginaw News to list all the people, businesses that donated, and the cost was ridiculous. And we would have spent what's left for next year just to take that out. So between Jan and Kathy Wagner, they personally wrote thank yous to every single business and individual that donated. So, but personally, hand, not like computer-type, but, you know, just sign your name. So that was, I think, even more sincere than an ad, you know, in the news. Let's see. Officer Byerline was a major spearhead, along with Trooper Joe, Seneck, Saginaw, rest of the Police Department, and Fire Department as well, and the many volunteers that came out. So I think it was, oh, the kids had a bigger chance this year. Officer Byerline went to the schools and sort of gave a challenge to the kids and said, "Fill this form out, and if you are home by curfew on both Angels Night and Halloween Night, possibility that your name will be drawn, and we will go to your house and see if you're there, and you'll have a chance to win a gift card," which, again, they were donated from Burger King and Arby's, and, I mean, Subway and all those.
Even Target, my ear.
And then we also had bikes donated.
Four of them. We got four bikes donated for the students, so it depended on what they picked out of the bag, on whether they, what they got in a prize. We did not assign prizes, so. Two were from Hammer Restoration, and two were from the Saginaw County Law Enforcement Group. They wanted to donate so that we could do more than just two bikes. So that was a big help, too. And those kids loved them. I mean, just, they were beaming. They liked most of the prizes that we had, because the kids even liked the food ones. I mean, just be able to go get food is something of a treat for some of them. So I think it went very well. We are already starting in July to, I'm going to start the meetings again to get us going. You learn more each year on what you want to do the next year. And this coming month, we're starting the Light Up the City meetings, too, so.
So it was a big success, and thank you to all that volunteered and helped, and it was great. And we're ready to do it again, and we even have money in the bank. So that's a good start. You're welcome.
Thank you.
They do put a lot of work into that, so we're very thankful for the help that they provide in that. They have meetings for months before the Arson Watch event, so we're glad that they did that. And I think Jan did a great job in being the chair this year, and hopefully she'll keep doing that in the future. So it's a great job by them. And that concludes the management update.
Any questions for the manager? Any questions for the manager? Okay, Councilman Balls?
I had mentioned last council meeting about getting the forfeiture funds to get police officers, the drug forfeiture fund. Did you check into that?
Yes, I mentioned that. I'm going to pack it regarding that issue.
Oh, put it in writing, so you had it. Okay, thank you. Keep quiet, Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions for the manager? Being none, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, your next item on your agenda is the consent agenda.
And remind everyone, the agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city's website, and also on SGTB, that is Channel 191. Councilmembers, a need a motion to adopt the consent agenda items, leaving room for exceptions?
Moved and supported.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, the next item of business is reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Let me first ask if there's any reports from any boards or commissions. Councilmembers, any reports tonight, boards and commissions? Being none, would you go through the appointments for us, please?
Sure. Your first appointment is approval of the council reappointment of Phil Carwatt to the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority, with a term to expire December 31st, 2018.
Need a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Clark?
Yeah, I wonder how he's going to have time.
Find time for this.
What's a reappointment?
I still wouldn't know if he's going to find time for this.
Obviously not during the WAM month. I'll figure that right now. All right.
It's very important because his department works with it, and he manages that contract in Saginaw. The city of Saginaw, I believe, is the biggest member of the Waste Authority by far, so I think they're very happy with the work that Phil's done on that committee.
Oh, I support him. I just think he's...
I agree.
Overburdened at times. He's still got black hair, he's not overburdened. Color it up.
No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Approval of council appointment of Annie Bench to the Region 7 area on aging, with a term to expire March 31st, 2016.
Need a motion to approve?
Move support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on the motion? Sure. Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Okay. That's kind of neat.
Councilman Fitzpatrick, for your information, I was the youngest one on that board.
How long ago was that?
Just prior to Annie.
Oh, and you were the youngest.
Oh, yes. I want you to know, at my young age, I was still the youngest there, so.
I see. Okay, that's interesting.
So, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is the approval of the council appointment of Matthew Wideman to the Building Authority, with a term to expire December 31st, 2019.
Motion to approve?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next is the approval of the council appointment of Matthew Wideman to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate, with a term to expire December 31st, 2016.
Motion to approve?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And there's acknowledgement of the mayoral appointment, reappointment of Odie Peru III to the Saginaw Housing Commission, with a term to expire September 8th, 2019.
And this is a reappointment, Phil?
It's a mayoral of reappointment, yes.
Madam Clerk?
And the next appointment, approval of the city manager reappointment of Thomas Basil to the Downtown Development Authority, with a term to expire December 31st, 2018.
Need a motion to approve?
Move support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have approval of the city manager reappointment of Dennis Whalen to the Downtown Development Authority, with a term to expire December 31st, 2018.
Need a motion to approve?
Move support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, and our final one is approval of council reappointment of Larry Koloris to the City Planning Commission, with a term to expire November 10th, 2016.
Need a motion to approve?
I don't think you can. I don't think you can.
No.
There's no financial benefit to you whatsoever.
So, been moved and supported. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, your next item of business is motions and miscellaneous business.
Is there any motions or miscellaneous business to become before the council? Councilman Clark?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Manager, you did bring up the issue of the Saginaw Career Complex, and I appreciate that. One of the things that the school liaison committee has been looking at is trying to get a council meeting, perhaps, arranged for the career complex. They just opened their restaurant, I think, the last week or two. So now may be the time to see if that would be possible, to do it as a lunch event. It'd be worth looking into. I'd certainly like, I think it would help all of us to better understand what the career complex does, and what it's capable of offering to our youth, as Councilman Balls has suggested. It's a huge, tremendous asset, and we don't use it enough. We don't spread the word enough. And having that opportunity, I think, would be very good if it can be arranged. So I would ask that that be looked into.
I'm looking at a few different things that would be, help to show council members some new developments in the city and some of the businesses. So this would kind of fit in with that, maybe even if we didn't have a liaison meeting there or a council meeting, we could arrange a tour of that facility with a lunch or something like that, that would give everyone an opportunity to see some of the facilities they have that maybe people aren't aware of. It's a unique facility, and I think maybe if council could see it firsthand, you could help get the word out about it. So definitely we could look at that.
Thank you.
Any other? Councilman Balls?
Mr. Manager, I know there's a lot of businesses coming to the city, and we have some buildings being built here. I was wondering if maybe we can get some of the trades to even consider taking some of our high school students and mentor them into the trades as these buildings are getting built. And what better way to bring pride into the city for the youth to understand what goes on in these processes? You know, I'm thinking that they would, if you would request it, they might even look at something like that.
Yep, I think we can look into that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Any other business? Yes?
I'll put this out here again. The program I ran in Detroit, very successful program, Career Exploring, and it had what you just described. It had, they were career posts for, whether it was pipe fitting, masonry, you name it. They had career posts for all of those trades. And in conjunction with the Saginaw Career Complex, I would highly recommend that we could even travel down that road and establish some of that as well, because it would also augment, you know, what is already proposed going through the career complex. But these students, a lot of the students that were in the program were non-traditional, not at all, but many of them were non-traditional students, who, you know, as we know, obviously, education, four-year degree is not for everybody in a former setting. But those students who were in those programs, I mean, they had a job once they completed the program. I mean, and they got the, obviously, the skills, you know, on-the-job training, and it was just amazing. I mean, it was amazing. That's all I can say. And it's very doable, and, you know, we can do that, but it's, we have to do it. We have to have volunteers. You know, we were talking about this when we were talking about the police program. We have to have volunteers, as do firefighters. I think Mr. Green came forward one day when we were doing our presentation. He said, "I'll volunteer." You know, all these programs have volunteers who say, "I'm going to do this." The investment that they're working with comes back a hundredfold because they're reinvesting. Actually, it's a pipeline for their organization. That's all it is. It's a pipeline. And we can do the same thing. With your background, Councilman Balls, I mean, as I said to you before, you would be the lead guy. You would be the lead guy, and we could make some connections, and we could do this. So, again, it's up to us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other business for council? If not, motion to adjourn?
Yep.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, signify by aye.